All right, good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock and we are on air. So I will call our meeting to order. I'll call our regular city council meeting of September 27th, 2022, being held in the Richfield Municipal Center in person to order. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all please stand if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before I continue with our agenda, I do just want to share a few comments. As many of us know, we have had a rough few days in our community here in Richfield in a rough few months. And on Friday, Friday night, we had a shooting outside of the high school that really shook our community during our homecoming football game. And it was a pretty sad and scary time during a time that our whole community comes together and celebrates. This this shooting has impacted all of us. And so I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge where we are as a community right now and to also thank all of the community members, the organizations, the groups that have come together, our Richfield Police Department, who has who responded to the event and was there immediately to our Richfield Public Schools that are that have been affected as well, our students and our families. So I want to thank our PD. I want to thank our school district as well for the partnership and collaboration in the response and thank all of our students, our residents, our community members that have been showing up during this time where a lot of us are afraid, a lot of us are concerned and have been rallying also as a community and have been rallying in support of our students after the situation. And I just want to also comment that there's the immediate response in the place where we are all right now. And that's rallying and and a place of resiliency and strength. But there's also conversations and work that has to be done and is being done right now and will continue into the future, near future and long term about creating concrete ways to partner, to make sure that our children, our students, our community members and our families feel safe, whether they're in school, whether they're in their community, whether they're here at City Hall and making sure that every single one of us as residents, as leaders, as community leaders, but as organizations are doing more to make sure that that happens. And so I want to acknowledge that there's a lot of work to be done and that we have been in and I've been able to be a part of many of those conversations of what does that look like? But that is something that is unfolding as well right now. So I wanted to acknowledge where we are at here in Richfield and also wanted to share some hope that there's a lot of work for us to do together collectively and to thank the people who have been involved in responding and taking care of one another. So wanted to start with that reflection before we continue with the business of our council meeting. So the next item on our agenda is the open forum. The open forum is an opportunity for any residents to come to the Richfield City Council and share comments with the council. It's not an opportunity to discuss back and forth, but it is opportunity up to three minutes to share any comments that you have with us. So I know we do have one person with us. Before I call her up, I will just let people know there's a couple different ways to participate. You can either participate in person at our council meetings or you can call the open forum line by dialing 1-415-655-0001 and use the webinar access code of 2455-052-3981 and the password is 1234. And that number is on our website and it is on our council agenda online. People can also submit their comments to our staff, any one of our staff, and let them know that they want their comments read via email and our staff will read your emailed comments. So I believe we have one person, at least one person here who would like to speak in person. So Ms. Dennis, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and share your name and your address and then the comments that you'd like to share with the council.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and the rest of the city council meeting. My name is Kelmy Dennis. My address is 7200 Seventeenth Avenue, South Richfield, and I'm here to make a proposal for a Richfield global marketplace. I'd like to propose to the city of Richfield my interest in acquiring space in Richfield for a global marketplace. Market research has shown that most cities in Minneapolis has a marketplace that catered to specific ethnic groups that have done particularly well in terms of bringing those communities together. However, what I'm proposing is a more diverse kind of marketplace, one that is on a more global scale, which would include peoples of all ethnicities and cultures that represents the rich history that is synonymous with Richfield. The vision for this global marketplace would include vendors of all races and culture and would include vendors from the Caribbean, South America, East Indian, Latin America, and from right here where you could walk in and get a cold beer. And that's just to name a few of the cultures. I see this as being a model marketplace, a real melting pot of a global thriving community right here in Richfield. Some areas tentatively identified for this project may include Cedar Commons, the 77th Street underpass, the current Dunkin' Donuts location, or along the Portland Avenue, 12th Avenue, or Chicago Avenue exits, or any location the city might deem appropriate. Some advantages include revenue sources from the following: the Mall of America, which has since reopened and is back in business. It would be very close in proximity to the MSP Airport, where visitors might have some extended layovers. It would be close to multiple hotels along the American Boulevard Strip in the airport. It would be close to the freeway with easy access to and from major suburbs in Minneapolis. Most importantly, it would be a gathering place for Richfield residents and/or sister communities Edina and Bloomington to share experiences as a communal spot, a meeting place where we could gather and come together as a collective in good and hard times. I do believe that together, Richfield can be a model for other cities with this vision of a global marketplace. Thank you for hearing, and I do hope that I hear from you back very soon. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you for your comments and for sharing. Is there anyone else here in person that would like to share comments at the open forum? And then I'll ask our staff, did we get any emailed comments or is there anybody on the line calling in? Nope. Okay. Nobody here in person? Okay, seeing as we don't have anyone in person and we don't have any emailed comments or people calling in, I will close our open forum. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the special closed city council meeting of September 13th, 2022, the city council work session of September 13th, 2022, and the regular city council meeting of September 13th, 2022.
Sound moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any comments on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the minutes have been approved. The next item is a proclamation recognizing LGBTQ+ History Month, and I will ask Human Rights Commissioner Mara Glubka to please join me at the podium for this proclamation.
All right, I will read this proclamation. Whereas the path towards LGBTQ+ equality and liberation has been paved by courageous persons who have fought for the right to love and to be loved, and their positive societal contributions of advancing areas of diversity, inclusion, equity, and respect deserve recognition. And whereas LGBTQ+ History Month celebrates and commemorates those who fought for equal rights and services for the LGBTQ+ community and is a means of educating others, promoting a culture of acceptances and inclusion, and advancing equity for all. And whereas the city of Richfield is proud of its diverse community, committed to equality for individuals of all sexual orientations, gender identities, gender expressions, and engages with community partners to provide safe spaces for LGBTQ+ individuals and their families to receive culturally sensitive services. And whereas today, Richfield endeavors to eliminate prejudice wherever exists, recognize the multitude of identities that make each of us unique individuals and envision a safe, inclusive world that allows all members of society to live openly and truthfully. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as LGBTQ+ History Month in the city of Richfield and call upon the people of Richfield to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies and to continue to honor the contributions of our LGBTQ+ residents throughout the year. Proclaim this 27th day of September 2022. And I will pass it on to Commissioner Glubka if there's anything you would like to share.
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to, since it's LGBTQ History Month, I'd like to share a little history, important history in LGBTQ, LGBTQ world in the United States. The biggest one probably be Stonewall uprising. That was back in 1969. The New York Police Department used to just go bash heads in Stonewall Inn, which was a gathering place for a few people back then. And there were, you know, two famous people, Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, started fighting back. And now there's a national monument in honor of Stonewall. And many of you probably know of Alan Turing, who was a gay British man who may have saved more lives than any individual in history when he broke the German code that allowed the Allies to probably win the war in Europe. But those highlights kind of pale under the long history of torture, beatings, murders, to name a few. We'll start with Hitler, who took out all of the LGBTQ groups when he got to power and burned down, his troops burnt down, one of the most progressive centers for human sexuality probably in history up until that point. In 1973, there was a nightclub called the Upstairs Lounge in New Orleans. And what happened there was it was it was a second floor nightclub in a wooden building and someone used lighter fluid to douse the steps leading to the only entrance to that place with lighter fluid and then set the stairs on fire so no one could get out and 32 people died. We all know about Pulse, which happened in 2016. Forty-nine people were murdered in a nightclub in Orlando. We know about like ISIS. ISIS has a way of handling LGBTQ people. What they do is they blindfold them, they take them up to the top of a tall building and push them off. They still do that today, by the way. In Russia, there are, there's an anti-LGBTQ propaganda, they call it the gay propaganda law, where you can't even mention LGBTQ people without being fined or thrown in prison. And they're tightening that up, they're making that worse. There are countries in Eastern Europe like Hungary that has has really cracked down hard on LGBTQ people. Poland had anti-LGBTQ zones up until recently. You all know about how black transgender women have been murdered. Malaysia Booker of Dallas, Texas, 23-year-old transgender woman was beaten to unconsciousness in the middle of the street in Dallas, Texas back in April of 2019. In June of 20, May of 2019, she was found dead in the middle of the street, shot to death. And there, in the last several years, there's been record after record after record of transgender women getting murdered. And it's usually really nasty how it happens. People don't just murder transgender women. They all, you know, if they run somebody over, they'll run them over again and again and again, you know, to show their hate. What else did I have here? Oh, Scott Pemberton was a Marine in the Philippines in 2014. He was on a date. He found out that his date was transgender, so he strangled her and drowned her in a toilet and got six years for it. So the history, the long history of LGBTQ people is suppression, torture, death, murder. It's, and I think we all know where things are headed in this country lately. So we've got a lot of justice to see served in the LGBTQ community. And, but thank you for recognizing LGBTQ History Month, and I'll stop there.
Thank you so much, Mara, and thank you for receiving the proclamation for the Human Rights Commission, and thank you for everything that you're doing to make our community of Richfield a welcoming place for everyone. So thank you.
Thanks.
Any comments from our council members?
No.
All right, that closes out our presentations. The next section is our, our agenda. So the next item is approval of the agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the agenda has been approved. The next item is a consent calendar, which is read by City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Office of Traffic Safety OTS funds for an extension of an original four-year grant to fully fund an officer dedicated for DWI enforcement in Richfield. Item B, consider approval of the purchase of five board hybrid SUV police interceptor vehicles for public safety from Ten Board, Board, Inc., for $224,804.40 plus destination tax title and license fee. Item C, consider the approval of the first reading of an ordinance adopting Section 625 of City Code prohibiting conversion therapy for minors and vulnerable adults. And I submit these items for your consideration tonight on the consent calendar.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Is there a vote?
Move approval?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to move the consent calendar. Any comments or questions on the consent calendar? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the consent calendar is approved. The next item is a public hearing, and that goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. This is a public hearing in consideration of the approval of a new on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for Katakki located at 6401 Nicollet Avenue. On June 22nd, 2022, the city received application materials for a new on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for Katakki located at 6401 Nicollet Avenue. All required information and documents have been received, all licensing fees have been paid. The public safety background investigation has also been completed. That was attached to our report and is in the packet for the public to view as well. The Public Safety Director has reviewed the background investigation report. There is nothing in the report that would cause the Public Safety Director to recommend denial of the requested licenses. So we will have a public hearing now if any member of the public would like to speak on this application, and if the applicant is present, we certainly invite them to speak And are we doing the call in still, City Clerk? Okay. Oh, it's there. I'll give it about a minute, but if anybody is watching this, they are free to call in and participate in the public hearing that way. Okay, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed.
Okay, I move that we approve the issuance of a new on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for Katakki at 6401 Nicollet Avenue.
Second.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions on the item? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. Thank you very much. The next item is, goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is to consider the approval of a second reading and summary publication of an ordinance amending Section 617 Food Establishments and Section 618 Lodging Establishments and Section 619 Public Pools of the Richfield City Code to update regulations to be consistent with delegated state requirements and miscellaneous edits for clarity related to food establishments, lodging establishments, and public pools. The Minnesota Department of Health, or NDH, recently reviewed City Code for Conformance with the city's delegation of authority agreement to license and inspect food and lodging establishments and public pools. Based on their assessment, NDH staff recommended minor edits to the city code to better align with state requirements for public pool plan review and lodging establishment variances. Updates include aligning food supplemental and temporary license categories in code and fee schedule, having code reflect the current practice of issuing outdoor public pool licenses after passing inspection, and adding a reinspection fee of $100 for an outdoor pool opening inspection when the operator fails to cancel the appointment and the pool is not ready to open. The first reading of this ordinance amendment was heard by the city council on September 13th, 2022. The, we have two, two motions that I'll move separately. One is to approve the second, I would move that we approve the second reading of an ordinance amending Sections 617, 618, and 619 of the Richfield City Code pertaining to food, lodging, and pools.
I believe the city attorneys general said we can do the summary publication.
Thank you, then I will continue on and also move that we approve the resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance.
Second.
All right, the motions have been made and seconded. Any comments on the item? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the two motions have been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
This is a second reading and summary publication of an ordinance amending the Richfield zoning code to update the regulations for electric vehicle chargers. This ordinance amendment would remove requirements that electric vehicle chargers or EV chargers be installed in enclosed parking areas. The amendment would generally maintain the minimum amount of chargers required and would not change any other dimensional installation requirements. The amendment will better align EV charging rules with the Minnesota State Building Code. The current EV ordinance requires that built structures include EV infrastructure, which goes above and beyond the requirements for built structures in the Minnesota State Building Code. This is not allowed according to state statute 326B.121. Staff has reviewed our ordinance and proposes to remove the word enclosed in order to avoid a challenge of the city's EV ordinance. Developers would still have the option to meet the requirement through enclosed stalls. Additionally, a change is required to the wording for conduit installation and residential uses with four to 14 units and 15 or more units. The recommended change in wording would require at least 50% of all parking spaces to be built with an EV charger conduit instead of the previous wording, which required 100% of all enclosed spaces to have conduit. The required ratio of 50% is intended to maintain the approximate required quantity of EV-ready stalls. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance change to bring our city's EV standards in line with the Minnesota State Building Code. I don't, staff don't have anything to add to this, right?
We don't have anything further to add, but I'm available.
I will just say I appreciate staff being proactive, making sure that we have a defensible ordinance. I will then move that we approve the attached ordinance amending the Richfield zoning code to update regulations for electric vehicle chargers and approve the resolution authorizing summary publication of that ordinance.
Hold on a second.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. Okay, and that was both of them you just did, right? Okay. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is to consider the approval of an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a one-year moratorium on cannabis products. In 2022, the Minnesota Legislature passed legislation that authorized the sale of certain edibles and beverages infused with tetrahydrocannabinol. with, uh, tetrahydrocannabinol, uh, cannabinol, THC, extracted from hemp. Uh, the legislation provided, uh, limited regulations for these products in Minstat Section 151 dot 72 under the Board of Pharmacy, including restrictions and requirements on packaging, labeling, and the amount of THC, and sale of these products to those under the age 21. Cities were not consulted during the drafting of the, this legislation, but have local concerns that need to be addressed. Uh, though the new law has some regulations on the products, there are significant gaps in, uh, state oversight and accountability of the manufacturing, production, testing, and distribution of products. On September 13th, 2022, staff presented the city council, presented to the city council in a work session. The presentation included background on the new law, the League of Minnesota City's Work Group update, and staff concerns at the city level for options for, uh, and staff concerns at the city level. Four options for consideration, staff recommendations, and finally, time for questions and discussion. Staff's recommendation to the council was to implement a one-year moratorium and then license the sellers of cannabis products. The purpose of the moratorium is to allow the city time to study the impacts of cannabis products and allow staff time to prepare a licensing ordinance for council consideration. If the council adopts a licensing ordinance before the one-year period is over, it can repeal the moratorium. So, um, should, I could make the motion, or does staff have any comments prior to making the motion?
No, we had a work session on this and went over the issues at the work session, and the guidance coming out of the work session was to present a moratorium.
Um, just to clarify, if this item were to be continued, should that happen after our motion is made, or should that happen prior to a motion?
It would be a motion to continue the item. So it would be before the motion to approve.
Okay.
Is, is how I would recommend doing.
So should we, we have, um, and I, uh, and just for folks that are, that are, are watching, are reviewing this, uh, we have, um, we had really good discussion, fruitful discussion, but I think not 100% agreement on whether or not we should have a moratorium and to pass, uh, even an interim change to the ordinance. My understanding is that we need a majority of the council, and so, um, we could, um, table this, uh, particular motion until we have, uh, our full council back. Uh, we wish our colleagues a speedy recovery as they and their families are recovering from COVID. Uh, we wish them well. So we could have the discussion now, or, um, uh, or we could move it. Uh, I, I guess if now would be the appropriate time, I would move that we table this or continue this, uh, agenda item until our next council meeting.
Well, sorry, I'm, um, I guess I would second, second that, and we can, we can discuss it. I would like to, to say a couple of things about this, and, um, I, I believe any other person who would be voting no had you, had you made the motion. And I do support the idea of tabling it because I certainly don't want a different outcome because somebody's like, that would not be, um, that would not be fair. Um, I, I want to reiterate from, from our work session, I don't think this is a good approach to policymaking. Um, our colleague, uh, Ben Whalen wrote in comments as well about, uh, I made this commentary in the meeting, which was, I think, really helpful. Um, the problems are related to use of the product, and the solution is related to brick and mortar sales in the city of Richfield, and I don't think there's a good nexus between the problem and the solution that's stated. Passing this moratorium will not prevent Richfielders from gaining access to this product. Um, they can go to either neighboring city that continues to allow this. They can go online with almost no age verification. Anybody with a credit card or PayPal account can get this. Um, it's nothing like regulating alcohol sales where we actually do have a lot of control and we can meaningfully prevent access. Um, I'm also particularly troubled that it would appear, and I'll clarify this, um, at our next meeting, that this would also prevent sales of Delta 8 that's been sold in Richfield for four years since that became legal at the federal level. Uh, I think this is the appearance of a reaction to something, but I don't think it advances public safety in Richfield, and I think it's unfair to Richfield businesses without accomplishing all that much. Finally, I just want to point out, Star Tribune had coverage actually right after our work session about this. I'd encourage, um, my council colleagues to read this, but I found particularly striking is that they did this, you know, they did their Minnesota poll about questions. They asked, uh, the public what they think of THC legalization, and specifically Hennepin and Ramsey County is they supported marijuana being legal for recreational purposes at a two-to-one ratio. 60% said yes, 28% said no, and the remainder undecided. Um, that doesn't mean they like all the details of the law, and it certainly doesn't mean that we as a city need to like it, but, um, it is striking to me that there is broad public support for this, and I worry that actions like this continue to undermine a, a better and more comprehensive and more thoughtful legalization path than the one that we had. So that is why I would be voting no today, um, but I certainly, again, support, um, this motion to continue because I would like the full council to be here for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. And I actually wanted to read Councilmember Whalen's, um, comments that he emailed in, and I actually forgot to read his comments for the proclamation, so I will do that at hats off. But Councilmember Ben Whalen of Ward, who represents Ward Three, shared that he continues to share many of the concerns around how edible cannabinoid products were legalized and the lack of regulation. My biggest worries are generally related, however, to the use of the products rather than their sale with minor, with minors using them, with people driving impaired, et cetera. I agree, more research needs to be done, and as we discussed in, as we discussed in the work session, think we need to move towards local regulations on the use of the product as well as licensing the sale of them. I am still not convinced that a moratorium is the right tool to solve these problems, but also recognize we don't have many tools as options. I am still torn on this vote, and I am, and as I am not present to vote anyways, will trust the decisions made by the rest of the council. So those were comments submitted by Councilmember Ben Whalen. Any other comments or questions on the councils? Um, Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to, uh, to share a couple, a couple of my thoughts. Agreeing, agreeing in part with, uh, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, and then I think, uh, disagreeing in a couple of places. One, I think, uh, just agreeing that, um, it's the right policy not to criminalize, uh, cannabis use. And I think that was, that was good, it was overdue. I'm glad that we've passed it. I'm also glad that alcohol and tobacco consumption are not criminalized, but also glad that we have the tools to regulate them. We've been really assertive in regulating things like flavored tobacco and considering that a really high concern. But now we have, um, THC products that are chocolates, that are gummies, that, um, can be sold in the same places and in even more aggressive manners, uh, than flavored tobacco. Um, and we don't have tools, um, in place to regulate that. And I think the point's really well made that it's, uh, we have consumption-based concerns more than sale-based concerns. But, um, that didn't prevent us from thoughtfully engaging, um, limitations on the sale process. And so, um, for that reason and in deference to, uh, our staff's request, uh, for a moratorium, uh, I'm inclined to support it. Uh, one item that Councilmember Hayford O'Leary mentioned is that potentially we'll be, uh, creating a moratorium on products that have already been sold for up to four years. That was the first I'd heard about that. And so I guess I'm a little concerned about that, maybe don't need to address that now. But if that's the case, if there's a way that we could, um, more tailor the moratorium, I would, I wouldn't be happy about going, moving backwards in that direction. So that, just share that, share that comment, um, without needing a staff response.
Just, I do just want to clarify, that was my own reading, so I would trust staff expertise to clarify that at the next meeting.
Um, okay, so I, given that this is going to be tabled, but this is also an important time to be putting out questions, comments, or concerns in preparation for when the item does come up. For this ordinance, can you, so can you just, um, share again? To pass the ordinance, we will need a majority of the council vote at the next, when this does come up, correct?
Madam Mayor, that is correct. It's a majority of all members of the council.
Okay. Um, and so I think we've had the discussion at the work session. We've had some discussion here, um, but I, the council is split, and I think as much as possible, speaking to the specific concerns that the council, um, members have had and, and continuing that conversation in preparation, um, for that meeting, I think would be really helpful. I don't think I have any additional comments from what I've shared previously. But any other comments or questions from the council? Again, given that this is going to be tabled, um, so there is prep, time for preparation for the vote. Anything else you'd like, want to share or say? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I do not have additional questions now, but I will refer any detailed questions to staff in advance of that.
Okay.
Meeting.
All right, um, so do we need a vote to table? Yes, we do. We had, and we had a motion, and we had a second. Um, any other comments? Okay, all in favor to table the vote, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. The item has been tabled for the next council meeting. The last, um, the next item is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to echo your comments at the beginning of the meeting. Of course, the shooting on Friday has shaken up everyone, and, um, I have heard of some of the reports of the kids and parents that, that were at the, the game and talked to some of our staff that have, have kids in Richfield schools, and it's, it's so sad and scary. Um, I really do want to thank our public safety staff for their quick response. Um, I also want to thank them, the staff at the schools, and our community for their willingness to have long conversations about. Those are ongoing and.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other, um, items on the report? No? All right. Um, next item is claims and payroll.
I'd move claims and payroll.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to move claims and payroll. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. And the last item on our agenda is hats off to hometown hits. I will pass it to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, couple, couple of community, uh, thanks and appreciation for everybody that was able to participate in, um, in Penfest. It was extraordinarily successful. Particularly, I want to thank, um, Gordon Hanson and all our, our community volunteers that worked hard for all our staff, that put in so many hours to make that successful for all our vendors. Um, there were, there were really no gaps from block to block to block. It was a great time, is a great expression of community. And, um, and I have to, I have to lift that up while, while just, um, just grieving and just sharing my, my heart that's hurting for our community as we experience another instance of, of gun violence. Uh, I do have to, uh, to take my hats off to our, our police and our public safety for their, their really good work throughout this process and, um, making really wise and timely decisions in real time. That's really tough and are always scrutinized no matter what, but I think they should be scrutinized when you made really prudent decisions, um, in real time, that I think, uh, kept people safer, um, and safely apprehending, uh, suspects. Also, um, this is, this is a really tough season that we're going through, and as someone who, uh, went to Richfield High School and have friends that teach at Richfield High School and, um, so many of our community members here, uh, we, um, we have problems that we can't, uh, we can't, we can't, we can't shoot, and we can't scream, and we can't, um, we, we can't force our way out of. And in this moment, I really, really hope that people don't lose heart and don't lose courage to love their neighbors, be vulnerable, take risks with their neighbors, and, um, and step into deeper relationships. And that's not, that's not a policy answer. We're going to be talking about those in the weeks and months ahead. But, um, my, I'm deeply grateful for this community. I've had, uh, I'm raising the fourth generation of Richfielders. I'm really proud to do so. Um, I can't think of another place I'd want to do that. And so, um, I just want to say my, my thoughts and my prayers are, are with our students and our staff, and, um, are really grateful for them.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Yeah, I want to recognize the, the shooting too. It's, it's hard to, um, compare to that, but you, you really captured everything and, and much more than I possibly could say. It is, it is hard to see, but I am really grateful to our schools, to our police response. They, I really appreciate how much they kept the public informed. That was a, I, I was not present, but seeing the video of the, the situation in the stadium in response to that was really terrifying and not an experience I want anybody to ever have in Richfield. So I am grateful, um, and, and our students are my thoughts as well. Um, I also wanted to recognize, uh, Penfest and that being a, a more positive experience. Both Gordon Hanson, I also want to recognize Dave Gepner, another community volunteer who's done a lot for this year after year, and all the staff who showed up. That was very obvious, I know, in the preparation, but also on the day of. Uh, in particular, want to, to say congratulations on the fire department. Their exhibit, uh, a friend came down, um, with a five-year-old daughter and stood in line and got to do the fire hose, and it was a really great, positive experience to see city services and see how that all works. So overall, it was just a terrific event, um, and I was really impressed to see such a great turnout.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. I do want to actually read a comment that I, uh, made a mistake and forgot to read during the proclamation. So this is, um, some, just a note from Councilmember Whalen. Um, he wanted to share, "Sorry to miss tonight's meeting, but my whole family is sick, so I am home recovering with them." And just to add the caveat that Councilmember Supple is in the same boat, unfortunately. Um, I wanted to add in my thanks to the Human Rights Commission for not only preparing these proclamations, but ensuring that the sentiments behind them also guide the actions. Specifically, the upcoming agenda item of a ban on conversion therapy is one concrete way to care for the LGBTQ youth and celebrate rather than deny who they are and their worth in our community. I hope we can continue to use both words and actions to support the LGBTQ folks in Richfield." Um, so just wanted to pass it along from Councilmember Whalen. And then my hats off, um, just to reiterate, the Penfest, I think I had heard that it was actually the most packed, um, well-attended Penfest that we've ever had. It literally looked like the Minnesota State Fair in Richfield. Uh, I could not believe that, so that was amazing. It speaks volumes to the connectivity and the pride that our community has in the city of Richfield, um, which goes to my second point, and my hats off goes to, to our entire community, um, who is really grieving right now and who is coming together. I think, um, a lot of people in these situations want to put blame and, um, have quick fixes. And the, the reality is that there is no quick fixes to things like violence in our community, and it takes all of us coming together, um, as leaders, as organizations, as residents, to create concrete solutions to make that happen, and that's not something that's going to happen overnight. And it's not something that can be shouldered by any one group or organization. Um, and so, you know, this is really, we need to continue having conversations in partnership with our students, with our youth, in partnership with our schools, our city, our police, our organizations, to make sure that as the community of Richfield, we can come together around our kids to make sure they feel supported, they feel welcomed, um, so that we are preventing things like violence in our community. And, and right now nationally, there's so many things that we are all struggling with, and this is a time, um, where we're going through a lot of transitions in so many different ways. And we need to come together, um, not just i- in spirit and in, in our grieving and emotion, but through very concrete, um, policies, action, and partnership. Um, and, and these are complex solutions, complex problems that need, um, solutions that are multifaceted. And so, um, I just want to elevate that fact that, that we're going through something right now, but that it really takes action, um, behind this. And so to continue that work, um, is, is, is what lies ahead of us. So thank you to our, our officers, thank you to our school. Um, thank you to all of the people in our community who have been coming together in response. And this is not it. This is just one of many steps that we're going to be taking forward together. So that is the rest of our agenda. I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.